Let's do a roll call again. Uh, Councilman Scritti?
Present.
Councilman Livingston?
Present.
Councilwoman Franz?
Present.
Councilman Taylor?
Present.
Councilman Papstren?
Present.
Councilman Matso?
Present.
And President Scanlon?
Present.
That's all seven here. The numbers are correctly? Yes, all the numbers are correct on the legislation, sir.
Can you explain the confusion?
Um, our legislation can be a little tricky because there's actually three different sets of numbers that we issued for each piece of legislation. There's the Request for Legislation Number, which for our first piece is 1957, um, which should all be in your packets. And then, once it gets through the RL process, the Request for Legislation process, then it becomes, then it's issued an introductory order, and that's how it's listed on your agenda tonight. So for our first piece, um, it's introductory ordinance 19-41. And then, once it's passed by council, then we issue a permanent number, and that's how it's filed permanently.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Livingston, you're also up? Thank you, Mr. President, yes. Okay. Okay, now into the not-preferred agenda, introductory ordinance 19-41, Considered Finance, Councilman Papstren?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to ask for unanimous approval, ordinance, introductory ordinance 01-41.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 Beaches and Pools budget to correct the hourly rate for the Recreation Park pool management.
Comments?
Call the question.
Questions are called. Roll call, please. Councilman Scritti?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Franz?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstren?
Aye.
Councilman Matso?
Aye.
And President Scanlon?
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's. Int introductory ordinance 19-42, Considered Finance, Councilman Papstren?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous approval of introductory ordinance 019-42.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2018 Binghamton-Johnston City Joint Sewer Treatment Facility budget to create a new budget line for digester 1 and 2, coating repair and digester crack repair, and transfer funds to the capital fund.
Comments or questions?
Call the question.
Questions are called. Roll call, please. Councilman Scritti?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Franz?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstren?
Aye.
Councilman Matso?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's. Int introductory ordinance 19-43, Considered Finance, Councilman Papstren?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous approval of introductory ordinance 019-43.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 budget to accept a FEMA grant award and create a new budget line for the Heiner Road FEMA improvements project.
Questions or comments?
Present.
Councilwoman Livingston?
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion to hold this piece of legislation over. I reached out to, uh, the city's attorney as well as to, uh, the department head to obtain the RFQ for this so that I could, you know, take a look at it with an RFQ process. It's not a lowest bid, it's a best qualified situation, and so there's actually a set of qualifications, and there's a scoring system, and I would, I would appreciate the opportunity to review that scoring system and look at the, uh, look at the agencies that submitted their qualifications, so I can better understand, uh, how this process came into play, that we chose this particular vendor.
Just for point of clarification, before that motion is heard, I think you may be speaking about, um, Resolution 1928, which accept, which, um, addresses the Shoemaker RFQ. This is the FEMA grant for Heiner Road. Do you want to hold the acceptance of the grant over?
Um, yes.
There's not, there's two different RLs that affect the project. This RL is about the FEMA grant acceptance for the work on Heiner Road and the $17,000 city match. The last one in your packet are 1928 is the total of 136, that's, uh, been designated via RFQ to Shoemaker, but they're two different resolutions.
If it wouldn't be out of order and it wouldn't, uh, put the, the city in any peril to, uh, to let this go through and hold over the latter, um, the last, uh, piece of business on the agenda, then I withdraw my, uh, motion over.
Yeah, yeah, this, this had, yeah, Mr. President, yeah, yeah. Point of, point of information, so, uh, again, ju- just to get a better understanding of what's going on here, there's two different RLs. One is the actual acceptance of the FEMA grant, which is the piece of legislation that is currently under consideration right now. There is a separate one that deals with the actual contracting of the respective agency. So if you're talking about qualifications of an RFQ process, that would be with the respective firms that actually bid on the actual job. That would not be this piece of legislation, that would be the other one that would be considered later on. Um, and we were also told, uh, due to the, uh, the nature in here, right, I mean, this is, uh, these are actually FEMA funds, so I think it's important to know, the FEMA federal grant covers 75 percent, there's a 12 and 1/2 percent state match, uh, and the, uh, the city matching funds are only 12 and 1/2 percent as well. Um, so we're getting over $100,000 that we're saving in taxpayer money between, uh, the FEMA grant and the state aid. Um, we were also, uh, it was also communicated to us that, again, for the purposes of moving this along to ensure, uh, and obviously, we all have experience with, uh, time-related factors and FEMA grants actually being received, um, we want to make sure that we, uh, push this forward efficiently as possible, especially for the residents on Heiner Road and the south side, to make sure that, uh, those things can be, uh, put forward. So, uh, with the broader process, I will support this, and definitely I hope that my colleagues will support the moving forward of the legislation for the grant. Thank you.
So, so you would, you want to go through all your motion tables?
Mr. President, uh, yes, I, uh, I withdrew my, my motion over, and I thank, uh, Corporation Council and the councilmen from the 3rd District, 1st District, pardon me, for the clarification.
No problem, actually, as a, as a point of order, we can never do the grantee and the acceptance of the grant money in the same, in the same res. Uh, so, understood, Ms. President.
Other questions or comments on this?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Questions are called. Roll call, please, please. Councilman Scritti?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Franz?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstren?
Aye.
Councilman Matso?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's. Int introductory resolution 19-23, Considered Public Works and Parks, Councilman Scritti?
That was 1943, or 23? 23. Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous resolution for introductory resolution 19-23. Second, a resolution authorizing the city of Binghamton to allow free swim at Recreation Park on July 3rd, 2019, August 7th, 2019, and August 21st, 2019, for DH Productions, Dip and Dance, to perform. Uh, again, this is a, uh, great program that we have at Rec Park, um, definitely, uh, Carol Winkleman, the department head over at the Parks Department, uh, has worked very hard on this, and obviously, all our Parks employees as well as the city, and I hope everyone will support it.
Any questions or comments?
Call the question.
Questions are called. Roll call, please. Councilman Scritti?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Franz?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstren?
Aye.
Councilman Matso?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's. Int introductory resolution 19-24, Considered Rules and Special Studies, Councilman Matso?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Um, I'd like to ask on behalf of my colleague, Councilman Matso, um, if I could get a second for purposes of a motion for recusal for word-related purposes on this motion.
Second?
Second?
I am recusing, so would be Councilman Papstren.
Councilman Papstren, can you read that one, please, 19-24?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous approval of introductory order, uh, resolution 19-24.
Second?
This is a resolution authorizing the Binghamton Rubble Pony to conduct fireworks displays in 2019. A total of 15.
Questions or comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Questions are called. Roll call, please. Councilman Scritti?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Franz?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstren?
Aye.
Councilman Matso abstentions? And President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six i's, one abstention, Matso. Int introductory resolution 19-25, Considered Finance, Councilman Papstren?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous approval of resolution 19-25.
Second?
This is a resolution authorizing amendment to the 2019 tax rolls for 21 Abbott Street, 31 Delmar Street, and 33 Gray Street.
Questions or comments? Councilman Livingston, Councilman Scritti, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, again, for all the residents just watching at home, uh, this is a very regular occurrence that occurs every year, um, when, uh, tax, uh, rolls need to be adjusted for respective properties, uh, that piece of legislation comes down to this, and that's all we're doing, we're just putting that through. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Call the question.
Questions are called. Roll call, please. Councilman Scritti?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Franz?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstren?
Aye.
Councilman Matso?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's. Int introductory resolution 19-26, Considered MPA, Councilman Scritti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I stand and ask for unanimous approval for introductory resolution R19-26. Second? A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Brum County for emergency services, communication systems at Ely Park. Um, just want to, uh, thank all of the, uh, both the City of Binghamton residents, as well as the Town of Dickerson residents, who actually came out to the town meeting that the county actually hosted, uh, to elicit, uh, to solicit, forgive me, uh, feedback from constituents and small businesses. Um, there's a lot going on here, and you could tell there's a lot of preparation to ensure that, um, uh, this county-wide program that'll be moving forward to make sure that we're getting, uh, all of our, um, emergency services and all those departments county-wide to make sure that they can get on the, uh, same network, that we move our infrastructure into the 21st century. Um, and, uh, also want to thank, obviously, all the regular attendees at Ely Park, um, Ely Park Golf Course. And, um, I think it's just important to note, with this new system, um, 55 entities will be in Brum County, uh, will be receiving new communication technologies, um, all of our first responders, police, EMT, school bus systems, um, from the moment that it's passed, uh, both provide better, safer services, and they themselves will, um, obviously, by extension, with quicker communication, uh, be safer as well. So I think it's a great project. I do want to, uh, commend and publicly thank, uh, Brum County legislator, Bob Westler, uh, for sponsoring this piece of legislation and helping to, uh, move it forward, uh, in the county process, and, um, our, our county commissioner, who's here as well, want to thank him for, uh, coming down to our work session, and, uh, and hope everyone will support this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Matso?
Yeah, I just have one more comment, too. I mean, it was questioned if there was going to be any public antennas put up there from other businesses, and it will not happen. So, just to let everybody know, this is just for our emergency services and other factors in the City of Barrington and elsewhere, and it does reach out to court, if I'm not mistaken. So thank you for that information. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilman, Councilman?
So this will unify all the EMS that we have for everywhere. For, so it's like, it's not just like the Binghamton, it'll be like all of the Brum County Police, all of the fire, emergency ambulance, everyone, so this is really great for us to have, and it's going to open up a lot more, uh, ability for us to really work in making sure that our community's safe.
Other questions or comments?
Call the question.
Questions are called. Roll call, please. Councilman Scritti?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Franz?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstren?
Aye.
Councilman Matso?
Aye.
And President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's. Int introductory resolution 19-27, Considered Finance, Councilman Papstren?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous approval of introductory resolution R19-27.
Second?
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to supplemental agreement number one with Barton and the Dutey to provide field design, construction inspection, and construction management services for the Sixth Ward Sewer and Receptor Project.
Questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Councilman Livingston? I'd like to make a motion to hold over this piece of legislation.
Uh, I'll second that.
State, uh, read it again, please.
Yes. Uh, so I, uh, reached out to, uh, Corporation Council and to the, uh, Engineering Department to obtain the RFQ, uh, for this and for the, the, uh, next piece of legislation up, and I have yet to receive them, and I feel, uh, it's my duty as a city councilperson, uh, to provide due diligence and oversight of projects like this, and unlike with an RFP, where the lowest bid gets the, uh, gets the project, uh, with an RFQ, it's a more complicated process with scoring system and with a, with a, a selection process that, uh, isn't quite as straightforward. And looking at the criteria that, uh, these, that these applicants were scored on, it's important to understand that the city is getting the best value and the best quality, uh, applicants possible.
Questions are held over by Councilwoman Livingston, second by Councilman Taylor?
I've got, uh, a second.
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, first of all, it's my district. Second of all, the people down there have gotten flooded and sewer water is going into their houses. Councilman, how would you like to live that way? And it's black. This stuff has been, we've been working on this project for six years plus, and it's finally happening, and you're holding over. I'll let them know that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I absolutely, uh, understand the grief that, that, that you're providing to the body and the grief of your constituents. I, I do think that it is not too much to ask if a councilman has questions left over on a, a piece of legislation that was expedited, um, and, you know, have very little time to get those questions answered, uh, i- it is in the right of a councilperson to want to know the qualifications for the RFQ and the request, uh, so, you know, if, if, if any fellow council member said, you know, there's an expedited piece of legislation, and there are, uh, questions that I have about this legislation that are, are going wholly unanswered, um, this is what I did, X, Y, Z, to get those questions answered, then, you know, they have the right to, to, to vote on something, knowing what the process is, feeling like they're informed, uh, and, and I do feel like it is my job to make sure that all seven of us can, can make those decisions, um, adequately, which is why I would second him for this.
I agree with what you did, and I understand, uh, and the reason why this was expedited, like I said, sewer water is going into other houses up there, and, I mean, to live that way, and we've been after this for years to get this done, and we finally got the way to get it done, and it's being held over, and I'm just going to pour my district wine. That's not a problem, so we're going to have to wait another month or three. That's all. Thank you.
Councilman Livingston, for the record, why didn't you ask Corporation Council and Ray Standish to clear this up?
Mr. President, I, I, I asked Corporation Council and Ray Standish today for, uh, for clarification on this.
And for clarification purposes, mainly due to the construction, wholly unanswered, um, we spoke for about 15 minutes, I think you spoke with Ray for about 15 minutes, and I think Ray did respond to you in an email. With that said, you have every right to hold over if you do not feel you have a sufficient amount of information, but the office would clarify that, of course, it responded due, due to the fact that the legislation was on tonight, not once, but three times.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Livingston?
And, uh, pardon the back and forth, I know it's typically out of order, but I, I do feel I just want to clarify that, uh, I'm not standing in opposition to this piece of legislation, and this is not going to add months to the process, uh, this is going to add days to the process, and I am happy to share those RFQs with my colleagues so that you as well can look them over and make sure that the city is getting both the best value and the best quality possible, uh, in this, in this process.
Councilman Matso, um, you feel we should have a special meeting about this? If, if Councilwoman Livingston can get his questions answered tomorrow?
Yes, I would like to.
Let's check availability, everybody, tomorrow at 6 o'clock here in, uh, rooms downstairs in 6:30?
Because I did, like I said, I've had many people off Duke Street and along the other side street there. This water's been flooding back and forth.
Can I can make this work? Councilwoman Livingston, the primary, uh, the primary documents that you, that you're awaiting are the RFQs. Anything else? If it were, if they're doing a meeting when, tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, yes. That should do it.
Okay, and we'll try and get that to you by 10 a.m. tomorrow morning.
Appreciate it, thank you. And I can make the meeting as well.
Go through, um, go through lead and make sure you have your questions answered, so we're not coming here for nothing tomorrow, please. Go through lead and make sure everything stays good with the big lead.
Well, we have to move tomorrow no matter what, if there's a special meeting.
Okay.
Hold, hold my overall, please, I mean, check it. Okay. After requested, with Council President, uh, we're going to ask everybody if they're available tomorrow. Councilman Scritti, I think you'd make it tomorrow at 6:30?
I may have to get back.
Okay. I obviously, of course, will make it a priority. Councilman Livingston?
Bless you.
Maybe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Franz?
Yes.
Councilman Taylor?
Uh, yeah, I have a north side assembly meeting, but I should be able to make it.
Okay. Councilman Papstren?
Yes.
Councilman Matso?
Yes.
And President Scanlon?
Yes. Thank you.
That's six yeses with one unsure. Scritti? So will we continue that tomorrow night, a special meeting to, to make sure Councilwoman Livingston has questions answered, and be satisfied, so we can move on this. Okay, that's the introductory resolution 19-28, Considered Finance, Councilman Papstren?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous approval of introductory resolution R19-28.
Second?
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with Shoemaker Consulting Engineering and Land Survey, uh, for the Heiner Road Improvement Project.
Questions or comments? Mr. President? Councilwoman Livingston?
I'd like to make, make a motion to hold over this piece of legislation.
Second?
Uh, Mr. President, I'm holding this piece of legislation over for the same reason, the request that I sent in to, uh, city engineer and also to Corporation Council was for the, uh, RFQ for both this and the preceding piece of legislation. Uh, I, I feel sad, I feel confident that, uh, if I receive these documents by tomorrow morning, I should have plenty of time to review them and time for a special meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Councilman Papstren?
In that case, I request that this legislation be put on a special, uh, meeting for tomorrow.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so, we got two items tomorrow, held over, we're going to attempt, Mr. Livingston, Councilwoman Livingston, to get his answers tomorrow, and, um, we can move on with these two meetings tomorrow at 6:30, and so, let's move on to, Councilman and Councilman. Councilman Matso, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, today marks the 20th anniversary of the American Civic Association tragedy, uh, we remember it very distinctly, and, uh, what a terrible, terrible day it was in our City of Barrington, and for our police department, and thought my thoughts and prayers go out to my friends and family, families that I know that worked there, and lost loved ones and lost friends, and, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's really tough that this happens in this world today, that you have people with so much hate that they just can't stand being around somebody and they're hurt of it. And with that, uh, I just want to say I'm sorry, and good night.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Scritti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, like Councilman Matso, um, I want to reiterate as well, obviously, um, our thoughts and our prayers for all the families, 13 families, uh, who had members' lives lost, and, um, our continued support for them. May we never forget. Want to remind 1st District residents, uh, next Thursday at 6 p.m., uh, we have a 1st Ward Neighborhood Watch meeting at St. Michael's Church, uh, 296 Clinton Street. It's normally, uh, the 3rd Thursday of the month, uh, but this month of April, um, it's actually going to be the 2nd Thursday, due to, uh, the Easter celebration that will be coming up, so we can make sure that we can work with St. Michael's, and want to thank them and Father Dutchell for always being so kind to us. Um, the immediate Saturday after that, April 13th, 2nd Saturday, please come town to Clintwood, come down to Clinton Street, come down to Cantique Row, support our, um, local businesses. Front Street Gateway Project, um, is finally underway, uh, the sun is finally out, at least on a regular basis, even though the winter seems to be clinging on a little bit with the wind and the chill that we're getting. Um, I was actually able to get a close-up look with some of the workers down there earlier today. They're actually pouring concrete in right now for the new sidewalks, and, uh, just as a reminder to everybody watching, you have full access, uh, to, um, all of our local businesses that are on there, by way of Oak Street through both Gaines as well as Winding Way. Obviously, be mindful of the, uh, the Front Street Close Street signs on both ends of front by both Winding Way as well as over by Prospect. Um, so, very excited to see that getting underway and having that finished up this year. And lastly, also wanted to remind 1st District residents, as well as, uh, anybody in the city who might be interested, um, a number of us, as well as Councilman Taylor and myself, um, we've been invited to a Phase 2, uh, construction gateway, uh, project and, uh, 81 corridor update, so we'll, uh, we'll obviously have some more updates from that information, that'll be taking place tomorrow at 9 a.m., and hopefully be able to disseminate that as well go along. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. And a Councilman Livingston for comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like to echo what Councilman Matso, Councilman Scritti talked about, the American Civic Association tragedy. Folks all over social media have been urging us to never forget, and so it really prompted me to remember, uh, that day, I was, uh, at the council church's retreat over at Sky Lake, and, uh, we heard about it, uh, as news was breaking, and we, we all rushed back to, to Binghamton, and, you know, the thing that strikes me is, you know, how a community responds in a time like this. And I feel like Binghamton has, you know, really shown itself to be a place where people come together, uh, when times are tough. I think that's something that I learned a long time ago. It's one of the reasons why I came back to Binghamton, why I'm still here, um, is because of the community that they have here. Um, also, I just wanted to let folks know there's a fast approaching deadline. April 15th, uh, is the deadline for the Vine Summer Youth Employment Program. Um, we voted recently to expand the urban farm, and because of that, there are going to be more jobs available, uh, for youth this summer. jobs available for youth this summer. In years past, Youth Employment Program has employed in total just over fifty people, and they're employing twenty-five youth this year. So the program is growing by leaps and bounds, they are looking for fourteen to twenty-one year olds, it's a six-week program, and you can apply at Vine's Garden and St. Allen. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. And Councilman Crone, Councilwoman Crone?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the West Side Community Neighborhood Watch, and that's at Monday, seven thirty at Post Eighty. Everyone's welcome if you're interested in making the West Side the very best side that it can be. We have, I have a meeting I will be scheduling at six prior to that with local vets who are younger in age, who wish to be more involved in the community, get some service going, get our children and our vets united, and see what our kids can learn from our vets. I was at the ACA this morning. It's always emotional, and we don't know why these things happen in our communities, all we can do is just work together, pray, and make sure that we can move forward as a community. I said a prayer for them today, because we didn't have them in Astor. I'm just going to sing a quick song for them if you don't mind. Day by day, day by day, oh dear boy, three things I pray, to see you more clearly, love you more deeply, follow you more nearly, day by day, day by day, day by day, oh dear boy, three things I pray, to see you more clearly, follow you more deeply, love you more deeply, day by day, by day, by day. First, we see it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Taylor?
Thank you. Everyone did a very good job of talking about the ACA, so I would like a little segment. There's a north side assembly meeting tomorrow at six o'clock, I will now not be able to make it, but maybe I'll come late. It is always a good time, so if you've got questions for me, I'm sure that they will be passed on to me. So that's at the Centenary Shingus Church, on the corner of Allen and Chanda Streets. Mac and Cheese Fest is also tomorrow at five thirty at the Holiday Inn, there are still very, very, very small monics available on the Binghamton Philharmonic website, so get those, I will also not be able to make it to that, but if you do, tell me how the mac and cheese is, I've been once before, and it is pretty insane for anyone that likes or loves mac and cheese, so check that out. I want to thank everybody that came today to speak. It, I take it incredibly seriously when, when anyone comes down to address this body with any concerns. I actually, having been in that seat before, I think it takes a certain amount of courage, really, to come down here and, and put your face and yourself out in front of the public, in front of, you know, your elected representatives, and say, you know, I think that there is X problem going on in my life that has to do with the City of Berington, or a problem with the city itself, something that I think is unjust, or something that I think is unethical, whatever it is, I take it very seriously, because I think it does require courage to come down here. So I will do, you know, whatever is in my power to get answers to some of those questions, and I do think that, you know, that allegations are serious, and I hope that City Council adds the body that provides oversight to the city, will take those concerns just as serious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, last thing.
Sure.
Final season of Game of Thrones comes out April fourteenth, crazy. Get ready.
I've never seen it. Thank you, Councilman. Last but not least, Councilman Patschtrach?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to offer my condolences, I know for ten years, we've been having the meetings at the ACA for the people that lost their lives so quickly and brutally. My friend, Dr. Jeff King, lost his mother that day, and I can't imagine how he feels as bad enough when you lose a parent by natural causes, let alone someone that's gone to work to help somebody in their capacity that they could, and not come back, I mean, I just can't fathom how that must feel. So again, every year, we have a great memorial that's dedicated to the people that lost their lives that day on the corner, I think it's a great place for remembrance, I've stopped there, sat at the bench, and it's, it really has a very calming presence to it. So spring is on its way, I want to say, don't get sunburned, careful how much sun you get out there. We are, we are the sunshine capital of the world, so have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. For that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
We adjourn.